Well, I got something that.
Yes, sir.
You got me down on Brown Street there. Don't lie to me now.
I wouldn't lie to you, man. But I will. Well, otherwise you're saying, "I don't want to go too fast, because I'll break all the shots." I will, but I just... I tell you, I never anticipated it. That's why I made those big boxes. Well, it is fun in a way, but I tell you.
...
No.
Had a big picture in there, man.
It's a cutting picture.
That was another lot.
Now, what have you done? What have you done so far?
Oh, he's gonna put that in.
Yes. I read this, actually, that's not about her. Because the story has said she's interested in doing can festival of the arts. So, that's when I looked her up. And founder, yeah, she's definitely.
God knows, guys.
It's pretty expensive.
It's not really a family. Twenty ten.
I'm gonna follow up. I got bought a bunch of stuff today. It's been unearthed.
But I, you know, I gotta look back because as soon as we...
Is this her attitude?
I went back. I'm gonna look back. I'm gonna look back.
And I forget, what do you call it?
We gotta have some. At least you do.
If I could have your attention, please, let's go ahead and get started. This is our regular council meeting, April nineteenth, two thousand and twelve. And if you would, please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for the inspection.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we bow. Father, we thank you for this evening. We thank you for the rain that you gave us after such dry conditions here. We thank you for all that are here tonight. And we ask that you be with us all and help us get through this agenda and make some real positive steps for our city and our community. We just ask that you be with us throughout the remaining days that we have here and keep us all in comfort and make this a better place to live. All these things we pray.
I'd like to go back to my guest and visitors. I think we have three very special guests tonight. Corporal Denise Berry, Officer Chris Harris, and Officer Dwight Tipton. Are they all here? None of them here?
It's obvious they didn't get the word.
They didn't get the message, okay. Well, this will be on our next agenda, but they made, they took some very heroic action recently, and we wanted to acknowledge that with them and with this council. So, we will put that on our next agenda to do so. I entertain a motion for consideration to approve our agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
One of the things we should do again is probably separate out the minutes, because Mr. Huffman was not at the last meeting. So, we can't do that by a consent agenda. Saying yes on everything but that are probably don't handle that. And the other thing I'd like to do is, under Old Business, we discussed at the last meeting about our cemetery. And I would like to put him, probably make a motion at that point for a cemetery resolution.
So, you want to add a discussion if possible, actual cemetery resolution, which we would make, I guess, as item, currently as item F under Old Business? Mr. Mayor. Yes, sir.
Under Old Business, I'd like to remove D and E. That's the SCADA system and also the reservoir office building.
Okay.
And remove that, and we'll postpone that.
Okay.
The Huffman?
Yeah.
Well, it's kind of in the air right now. We've got to have a meeting. We're going to be meeting with Cobb. And if we can get our meeting done next week...
Week after.
Week after next, then we should be able to have it in the work session. But until that point, it's...
If I may add...
Just call it to, just call it, if you want to, we just call it to the work session. If we have to do it again, we'll do it again. But the work session from that being first amendment.
Mr. Mayor, if I may add that Turner's last week facilitated a meeting with primarily Max Bate and Glenn Page and a couple of their board members. And with the committee that you established, the reservoir committee for, I guess it was at the last meeting, to get together and discuss all of these issues and lay down, one of which is the right of first refusal and so forth. And they have given us four dates for the week after next. And I'm waiting on the other council members who will get back together. I've heard from Mr. Wood and I've heard from Mr. Beresford. And it's our intention to sit down with them and discuss these, these particular topics along with other issues.
Okay. Anything else, any other changes you'd like in the agenda, requested in the agenda? Okay, Ms. Clerk, would you, can you tell us all that has been modified here?
Mr. Cobb has asked that some agenda be separated due to Mr. Huffman's, I mean, Mr. Huffman's absence. Also, that the cemetery business be increased in the Old Business, item F. Mr. Beresford has asked that items D and E in Old Business be postponed for work session.
Okay. Any other discussion regarding that? If not, those in favor of amending this agenda to this degree, signify as a aye. Aye. Opposed, no? I'll give the vote for the motion. She wants to go through here. You may have to, Susan may have to keep track here, since we did make some changes there. We now have a ten-minute public input period, and Sarah Cool is here. She's been a regular here.
Well...
You were here last time, weren't you?
That's right, I was here.
Welcome back.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I just wanted to revisit the bike lane issue. I did get a chance to visit for an hour with Dave Cangini and Joby West last week. And Dan Thornton joined us from Free Flight Bikes. He's the owner of the local bike shop. So, my proposal is that rather than create actual bike lanes, that beginning with the square downtown Canton area, where it's currently illegal to bike on the sidewalks, that we paint what are called charros on the pavement of the right-hand lanes going in both directions for eight or 10 blocks around the square, the downtown Canton area. A charo is a shared lane marking. And it's painted on the travel lane to indicate that bicyclists may use that lane. Charros act as a reminder to motorists that they must share the road with the bicyclists. Charros remind bicyclists that they are encouraged to ride on the road and not the sidewalk. They also remind bicyclists in which direction to ride. And I think in doing this, Canton will convey a welcoming message to bicyclists from the city of Canton. And then beyond the square downtown area, we could select major thoroughfares to paint charros on, such as Riverstone Parkway and others, to increase after city life. And I did email you a picture of what charros look like and how they could be painted. So, what you do with that then from here, I don't know what the process is. But that's my citizen's suggestion.
Thank you. Joby, do you, do you feel that that's something that could be done? And, you know, right now, of course, you know, certainly like to encourage biking as much as we could. And we can't do it on the sidewalk. And so, as far as I know, anybody riding bikes through town has to ride in the street anyway, right?
That, that's...
So, would these errors, you know, maybe bring attention to motorists that that was being shared with bicyclists?
I think so. We just, we want to make sure we don't insinuate that it's safe for her, say, like her nine-year-old daughter and then have a car backing out. And we don't insinuate that these are specified by code bike lanes. We're not sure if charros give that insinuation that we have certified by code bike lanes. But as far as paying the charros that fit up, cause any liability?
Okay.
That it just makes share of the road, I'd be perfectly fine.
I would suggest that we put this on our work session for the, for the work session in May and really take a closer look at that. And then we could potentially have some action at the second meeting in May, if that's what this council chose to do.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Could then, if it's on the work session, can we have a map overview of where you're talking about? Because I have a rough idea what you're saying, but it's going to end somewhere. And then what happens where it ends? What's the situation there? So, if we could have that overview, Joby, I think you could give us that.
I certainly can.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I have one other issue.
Sure.
That's okay. I would like to just read the email that I sent you about the homelessness issue. Mr. Beresford has shared with me some of the history, which I don't know, because I just moved here a few months ago. So, at the end, maybe you'll share a little more history with me and let me know who I could be in touch with, because I would like to be a part of the solution. And I sent the council this email earlier in the week. "I noticed that you begin each of your council meetings with a prayer. And so, I have to assume that you are people of faith. And as a person of faith myself, I am mandated to love my neighbors myself, treat others as I would want them to treat me in similar circumstances, be the hungry, clothed, naked, care for the ill, visit the prisoner, and invite the stranger in. I therefore found it disheartening to learn that a homeless campsite was disbanded during Holy Week. After speaking to the codes officer who was in charge of that action that took place, it appears that we are more concerned about private property than human life. We're more concerned about the care of things than we are of God's children. The codes officer told me that there were feces and trash everywhere on this piece of private property owned by the Galt family. I think that was something that he used. I asked him to describe what the land was used for. He told me that they grow hay on it. The codes officer told me that many of these homeless folks are not actually homeless, that they have places to live, but they choose to live in the woods. He said they do so because they like to drink and party out there. I found it curious that the codes officer knows so much about why these folks live the way that they do. Many of them speak Spanish, and so I doubt that he'd had any in-depth conversation with them. I speak fluent Spanish, and I would be happy to translate any conversation that anyone would like to have with these folks that, so that we might truly understand where they're coming from. The things that I think about are, what if they live there out of fear? Due to mental illness, because they're abused in their homes, maybe they're veterans? Do any of us know for sure? Are any of us 100% sure that we might not walk in their shoes one day? What if you or one of your friends or family members had a mental illness that drove you to live in the woods? How do you think you would wish to be treated? As people of faith, how can we possibly be more concerned about a piece of property where hay is grown over a group of people that are God's children, just like we are children of God? They are our brothers and sisters. If they are content living in the woods and we're worried about feces and trash, why don't we install a porta potty and a trash bin? They could be serviced weekly, just like we service the porta potties and the trash bins at the park. What would it cost us to add one more of each? Our brothers and sisters not worth that much. If this particular property is completely off limits because it's private and the owners don't want these folks there, can we not find some piece of property, some piece of land to let them live on? A place to pitch their tents, hang their tarp's? What's the harm? What's the cost if we do? And what's the cost if we don't? Beyond this, thinking bigger, does anyone have a house to donate, so that a proper shelter could be created for those who do want to get off the street? Are there homeowners in Canton who have spare bedrooms called Christ Rooms to offer those who have none? Are there campgrounds where tents could be pitched legally in Canton? Do you need translators, such as myself, so that you could find out what folks' real issues are, such as needing medical help, mental health help, employment assistance, legal issues, et cetera? I believe humane solutions are available to us. And I believe that we must act now to treat our homeless brothers and sisters with the care and concern that they deserve. I understand that we've all been created in the image of God. Let's look for God in their eyes the next time we come in contact with them. And I think that alone will change much of our perception. And then I had a couple of questions. Where and when could we have this conversation? With whom could I share these concerns? Who amongst us has the answers or the ability and tryst time to create the answers that work for all of us? And you suggested that I come here. So, here I am. Thank you for the invitation.
Thank you. Anyone have any particular comments or...
Well, as I've shared with Sir the Woodstock Baptist Church, Randy is his...
Richardson.
Randy Richardson.
Randy Richardson is the name that you could certainly talk to.
And I told her about the shelter that they have, they conduct for winter period of time. And...
Most businesses.
Jack.
I'd also like to say that this is not something new to us. We, we looked at this last year.
Couple of years ago, yeah.
And we had people, especially down in the winter time, living down there and having to build fires and worried about, you know, what could happen, something like that. You know, we are, we all are concerned about those people. God's greatest commandment is love one another. And I think we all do. But, you know, it's one of those things that we have to, we have to be knowledgeable about who is there. I like what you said. And find out exactly what their needs are. We only have so much money that we can offer for facilities. But time and maybe even people in the community can offer a little more. I feel humbled to be glad to help serve on that if you have something to add.
So, we are in, sir?
Jack. Randy Richardson with the Woodstock Baptist Church has, has worked and he has helped to coordinate efforts from a number of the local churches who have, he's garnered volunteers from these churches to man this cold-weather shelter and stuff like that. So, he would be a good person to, to speak with, I think. Especially since he can, you know, like get you in touch with the churches too, who want to get involved in that.
I will say that I've been going to Liberty Hill and... I will say that I've been going to Liberty Hill and Pastor Jamie had been helping these folks for some time. And so when we learned that they were made to leave the property and their things were, I don't know what happened to their things, that the few possessions that they had on the property, we didn't know where they were for a while. We, we found them since. We called them our friends and so it was, like I said, disheartening or concerning to us because we had been caring for them. So I'll, I'll get in touch with the Woodstock Baptist and maybe I'll come back another time with some more ideas.
Very good.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Eric Trader.
Good evening, Eric Trader, 303 Double Way, lives down basically in South Canton. Two brief issues that have kind of been bumbling around in my mind for the last couple of months. I'm a small business owner. I was a builder for 25 years, had a guaranteed income that was really great, but now I'm out on my own. Well, when I went to renew my business license, I, I found out that the business license fee schedule is based on grocery receipts. Well, I, I wish I could take home the grocery receipts that I generated last year, but that's not what flowed through in my 1040. So what I'd like to do is ask the administration to reevaluate how the, the business license schedule, fee scheduling is generated. If you take a look at a quick survey of our neighbors in Woodstock, Holly Springs, I think even the county, most of the renewal fees are under a hundred dollars. We talked about possibly basing it on number of employees. I mean, I have a, I have a home-based business. It's called Desktop Computer. I don't have any cars coming to visit me at all. I've got a little bit of material that I keep in my garage, so I'm not putting any more burden on the infrastructure of the city, whether it be police or fire, whatever the case may be. I am paying the taxes upstairs in terms of my, my main residence, so I can only imagine how many people are fine under the radar of small business owners here in Canton. There might be hundreds of them, we just don't know. But if, you know, if the law of economics kicks in and we, we lower the price of the initial and possibly the renewal, hopefully they'll come out of the woodwork and generate more revenue. Second point briefly is one of my favorite subjects, impact fees. Living in South Canton, oh gosh, there's probably hundreds and hundreds of houses that were built down off the Prominence Point Parkway and Keeter Road over the last five to six years. We have no park down there whatsoever, not even a park to shoot a basketball. So it always irritated me that as a former builder, when, when the, the big builder that I worked for cut a check for a million dollars to the city of Woodstock for infrastructure and park and all kinds of good stuff, road improvements, how all those houses could be generated down there and none of that money stayed. Well, the good news is my community, which was dormant for three, four years now, three years. New builders come in, Smith Douglas, they're going to probably generate about a quarter million dollars worth of impact fees based on about 120 lots, about $2,000 a lot, let's say. Well, a quarter million dollars is a start. The question is whether there's a piece of property down there that can either be dedicated in lieu of impact fees or something of that nature that at least we can maybe get a small park going. But more importantly, any money that's generated down in that neck of the woods leads to stay down in that neck of the woods. I think that's only fair given the fact that the new builder may not, he may not decide to put in a small pool. He may not decide to put in a little volleyball court or something of that nature. But I think it really needs to be kind of in the public area because a lot of those communities, they do have small amenities inside, but I can't go across the street to Holly Mill and start using their basketball court. So I would just ask the, the administration to consider maybe earmarking any monies that come out of that area for future improvements. There might be a small piece of property that might be in a right-of-way where you could develop a, a small park underneath the power lines. There are some pretty flat areas over there that, that could possibly use electricity and bother the overhead. I built plenty of houses along electrical lines and people, people bought them pretty quick, so. Those are the two issues I'd just like the administration to consider and bring to the council considerations.
Could you have, do you or your homeowners association had any discussion with the new developer?
Well, that's a, that's an interesting story because you've got, you have a, you have a company called Pacific Group, which is the declaring. They are selling lots to Smith Douglas on a takedown basis. We had gone through three or four different hands. First, first National Bank of South Carolina, first Citizens of South Carolina FDIC was involved. It's kind of messy right now. I've, I've heard that the salespeople over in our community, they're getting a lot of families moving in, so it's no longer 55-plus. Although it was never designated as an adult-only community, the vast majority of our residents are, are senior citizens or 55-plus like myself. So they might develop, there's, there's two un-billable lots. I mean, it costs $100,000, they're making billable. So there might be a lot where they might put in a small amenity pool, but nothing like an area where you, like you said, go over and shoot some baskets, maybe play volleyball, maybe you have a racquetball wall, something of that nature. That, I mean, it's typical. I think the closest park to us might be Barnett way over. I mean, it's hard to get there. You can't really get on a bicycle and bike over there. You gotta really get in your car. And I'm just looking for somewhere where you might be able to get on the bike or walk there and you just have a, a general, general play area.
Is there a piece of property that even is suitable for such a structure or?
In, in our community, probably not because as a former builder, they're going to build on every conceivable lot they can. If they do have these two lots that essentially they have to abandon, they'd be lucky if they could get a little 20 by 40-foot pool in there with a men's and women's bathroom. So in the community, I wouldn't say that I could see anything where they're going to give up two or three lots because you're, you're talking about probably, you know, $25,000 worth of margin times three, they're probably not going to go that route. But I mean, if we could find a, a little piece of property between where we are and the Publix, and I know there's commercial property up there by the daycare center, but you know, that's probably going to be pretty expensive. So you're needing, you're going to need to find, you know, some nook and cranny that is relatively flat that could maybe be developed into a passive park situation. And it might be a right-of-way. I mean, the city of Canton might have something around there that was left over from just the development. That's something that we forgot about, but that might be an option. It's, there, there is, there is a lot of right-of-way land behind the Family Dollar up in that area that might be available for or something like that. But again, quarter million dollars are going to come out of our community.
With your experience, with your experience as a builder, you're probably a, it's good person to go and recognize a piece of property that will offer that opportunity.
I, I have a problem looking for. I, I'm, I'm good at bearing out a lot of that stuff.
Well, I would suggest that, that happen and bring that to us and, and let us turn it over and see what may or may not be able to be done.
But most importantly, keeping the handle on that money that's coming out of our community. Because again, millions of dollars flow through impact fees from all of those houses and it went somewhere else. None of it really that I can see stayed in our community. There's other issues that I, I'll cut it off now. Thank you.
Mr. Goodman?
Yes.
You mentioned that piece of property behind the Family Dollar. That's, that is a pretty good space that's big enough to put small, small facility there. We might look at that one.
Yeah.
And also the other side, it backs up to the cell tower and we, we actually approved that cell tower, so we might be able to.
Is it in that, in that area?
Yeah, it's right there, right on there. We might be able to check that out as well.
Well, I know, I mean, having built South Ward for many years, there were passive parks, plenty of them underneath the right-of-way. In fact, there was a newer part.
Both of those go along the, the.
Yeah, now I, I would imagine that's probably George County or, or that, that part right of way. But that'd be a good start. I mean, it's, it's kind of free land. I'm doing anything with it. They're not even cutting hay off. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mike Craig.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Mr. Lookie there and our, our neighbors in Great Sky and I work for a company called Cam Contracting. We occasionally do work for the city. And it was brought to my attention by the project manager for utility partners that the pump station in Great Sky is taking on a lot of solid waste, primarily grease. And when those pump stations take this grease in, which usually comes from people's garbage disposal, they'll, they take cooking grease from how they're frying food or whatever, they dump it down a garbage disposal and it winds up in a pumping station. It makes the pumping station, which is made, it's got a mixer in there. This mixer turns and churns and keeps everything fresh till it gets pumped out to the treatment plant. When all this grease gets in there, and in Great Sky's case, it was a foot, a foot and a half thick of grease sitting on top of the, the waste. And what that does, it turns those wastewater containers into a septic tank is what it does. And when it does that, it starts creating that sulfide gas, like the, the, of the rotten egg odor, which you sometimes smell. It does that and that gas is very corrosive. It eats up the pipes in there, it eats up the mixer motors, the wiring. Brady had told me that they had fixed one in there and I think it was close to 20, 10, $15,000 to get that repaired and that's something the city has to wind up coughing up money for. And in an effort to try to save the city some money. How we disseminate the information to, and it's not just Great Sky. Laurel Canyon has that problem. Or some of those.
River Green?
River Green. Some of these newer developments has got these pumping stations. They're all having this kind of problems and they're, they're heavy duty repair maintenance problems. It costs the city a lot of money. So we were trying to brainstorm and see if you could get something out of the water bill, get something out of the paper, start asking people not to dispose of solid waste, the grease primarily down their garbage disposal. It would put a lot longer, the, the motors and mixers in these pumping stations couldn't last a whole lot longer. That's, that's my spiel. I was just trying to deal with Lookie and see if that might be a possibility.
Mike and I had a conversation about that on a couple of occasions. So it's great information that we have that, and a great opportunity to save some money because the cost of the pumps, but also the cost of the inconvenience and the labor that goes, goes into that. I think it's a matter of education of, of each household as, as how to best dispose of grease. And I, I'd have to say that I personally have poured it down to the drain myself. Thinking it's just a little bit, but everybody's little bit, it really does add up. So with that said, I would like to suggest, thanks to Mike, that we put this, some of this nature that you've got in front of you into the water bills on various towns on the website. If the press would print that as some way, just to try to inform and see if we can educate some of our citizens to the fact that this is costing us, this is costing us all money. Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Brady Silly, I'd like to ask a question.
Okay.
The, the, you mentioned a foot and a half of grease. How long does it take for, on the general, not on average, I guess, for a foot and a half grease to show?
About a month.
How much?
About a month.
About a month?
Now, we out there probably once or twice a month beating it up with a hose. Bear in mind, this grease, no matter what we do with it, it's going ultimately end up in the waste plant. And we all pretty much know what kind of problems we're having there. Grease is one of the problems that's caused this plant to be empty and chicken's in. And Canton is, to me, I've worked all over the United States in this business and if you need things, the residential is worse here than commercial.
Well then, let me ask you, if you check it once a month?
We check them every day, but we, we have to really clean this thing, that particular one about once or twice a month.
Okay, so, so what are we talking about in the cost of you cleaning that week? I mean, I mean, we, we got a problem, you just said, it's going to ruin our equipment. And meanwhile, until we get this new system where people are aware of it.
This is one station in Great Sky. When you consider that there's about five or six in Laurel Canyon and seven in River Green, all doing the same thing. Now, I think the city already knows that we pay, or I'm no joking, we paid a cleaner to come in and clean several stations in, in Canton. And if you do that on a regular basis, it's terribly expensive. The mixer that we put in there, we actually took that mixer, reallocated it, if you will, from Town Mill lift station to Great Sky because Town Mill wasn't having a problem with the grease, the Great Sky was. So we took this mixer out because that's a, that's a piece of auxiliary add-on equipment for most stations.
Well, you say you come in there with stick and beat the grease?
On fire loads.
Yeah, so what's that do? Just scrub it?
Pump it out. It goes down the line to an open.
Well, why? Mayor? Yeah, excuse me. What I'm trying to figure out is, if you're out there looking at it and saying, we've got a problem, you don't pump it out, you can't pump it out or you dip it out or whatever, I'm just trying to figure.
As Mike was saying, the ultimate solution is to keep it out there to begin with.
Well, I agree, but we got in there. So what we're going to do is sit and let the equipment go down the tube? Or can we have it where there is coverage on it so it's maintained to a level until we see that this idea will drop off and come back?
We are presently doing that. We are getting it beat up. We are, got a new mixer ordered. The one that was in there burned up twice because of the heavy load, we got a bigger mixer coming. That will keep it beat up and going on down the line, but now like there again, you got to follow this through the system. At some point in time, you're going to hit it again until it gets over to the end, this leaves the waste plant. Because one station pumps to a gravity sewer line, they gravity it down to another pump, so it ends up over one hill over another. So it all ultimately ends up over in this waste plant.
And unless you dip it out before it even gets started down the line.
Right. That's, that would be a good way to do it. It's expensive, extremely expensive.
What's, what's the line on spook?
What's the line on, to me, right now, getting it pumped out and cleaned down there is ultimately going to be less expensive than trying to deal with it in the system.
That's what I'm trying to ask. Why then are we doing that more often if it costs that? But if it's less expensive and damage to the ultimate end down here, then why don't we pump it out?
I agree with your husband.
Okay, and?
And I can requisition it. That don't mean it's going to come back to me to do it. I can't just ultimately do it. I'm only, I'm spending, I don't like it.
What kind of money are you talking about there?
You have that last cleaning that we had done?
The ma, the major clean, the major one was. We had four smaller ones, if I remember correctly.
About $6,000.
About $6,000 total and the, and the major one was Caldwell.
We didn't get it, oh no, the major one was Harmon Field.
I mean, Harmon Field, you're right. It was, it was right there.
Harmon Field is a mess anyway.
See, it was $30,000 to clean it out one time.
Well, if I can consider condition over there.
Consider this, consider this. It cannot be cleaned out in, in quite some time. I just want to throw that out. It may have caused it that much this particular time.
Looked at the pictures, it definitely shows that. So give us a recommendation, get it to Mr. Wood.
Right, and we get them all cleaned at least once a year.
Well, that doesn't solve, you said it happens every month?
No, we, it, it, it needs to be addressed in two ways. It's not one way that's going to solve it. For long-lasting ways, we, we need to, it's kind of the old garbage in, garbage out and we got to stop with going in. In the meantime, in the meantime, we'll have to, we'll have to pay to have it fixed. I, I guess the question I have is, is there anything unique about Great Sky?
There is, there is something unique about it.
What is?
And it's called. And it's called grinder pumps in the backyard, low pressure sewer system.
Oh really?
Right, those things become, if you don't, not very careful, they become giant garbage disposals. They grind up everything, you throw down that sink or that thing. I know Mike, it's a bad way to put it, but if it did come out of you, obviously it don't need to be in there.
If, ah...
That's just a bottom line.
So Brian, how many of those homes have that?
Twenty-two hundred, uh, was a lot, it was basically slated to go out there. Exactly how many is in there, I don't know, but it's...
Every house is in there, it's got it.
Yeah, it's eighteen hundred or so.
Every house in there has a grinder pump and a septic tank?
I think so.
Not a septic tank.
No septic?
Not a septic tank, it becomes...
Or it goes, it's in the sewer?
It's a little grinder pump called E1 and Eco, Eco Tech down here in Holly Springs is maintaining it. It's what we call a low pressure sewer system. And which means it's a low pressure full tank till it gets to a point where it can gravity.
What about River Green, is that?
No, there's not, it just happened, it just happened to have seven, pretty good side of this sewer.
So the grinder pumps are the problem?
They are a problem, but not the problem. They're not, the only problem is getting in there.
Can I?
If they're on gravity...
You hear it once a month, if you don't keep getting in there, that goes on and on. It's got to stop somewhere.
The ones that's on gravity also have a grinder pump?
No, sir.
No, they don't? So, so how many houses do you think it is that has that?
I think it's around eighteen hundred.
Out of twenty-two hundred lots?
Out of some twenty-two hundred slated to go in there.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor? We're looking at about a seven million dollar bill for down here at the treatment plant.
That's great.
Okay, that's, that's caused by, in large part, by grease.
Right.
Filters and all the things that says people put. My question, or not my question, I would ask, Mr. Wood would have a document that we could look at that, like your recommendation, saying, if we clean them out every month before we get a foot and a half of grease, pump them out. Not all of them, the ones that need it, the ones that particularly is concerned. Or go out there with a fire hose and squirt it around for a while, let it go on downstream. What's that cost? And the end, the cost is going to be a major impact on our treatment plant. So give us an overview, your recommendation of what we should do with the cost of what we're looking at, so that we can say, in the interim, until all these good folk learn how to run water through the system versus everything else comes out.
It's another consideration is, if you don't do something about it, if you do, even if you keep it on moving, somewhere along the line, it's going to stop up in the middle of the night, it's going to run over and we're going to get a fine.
Okay.
And anything more we can do about it?
We got the problem, let's see how we can address it and get it. So we, well, we need to, Great Sky needs to be educated.
Great Sky is probably number one, but you still, you got, Mayor, you know what kind of trouble we've had with Cherokee Oaks?
Oh yeah.
Extreme problem. So that goes back to the eighties. Uh, what's this governor's block area? Out of all those lots out there, they got certain ones that have, that have to have septic tanks just to use the sewer. They don't have any pumps, but they got a septic tank and it goes into, settles out, then overruns out here, so we can even use it.
That was me. I had one of those. Five thousand dollars it cost me putting it grounded.
And that was in place before I got here and I've been here going on fifteen years. So, I've been fighting for fifteen years, y'all just get windows right now, but you can't... They teach us in the wastewater industry, it's like a human body. You plug it up, it's going to die. And that's what we're looking at.
Well, we, we want to stop there.
Well, I think that's what we want to do, so why don't we go, why don't we go along with Luke's recommendation that we put this in the water bill? It'd be printed on the water bill, you know, outside by the grease trap and so forth.
I mean, we need to put that everywhere, if the media happens to be here, we'd appreciate if you could print that as well.
I think education is, is a primary way to go. Because if we can get people in the mindset of not getting it in there, then we can certainly be in the mindset of not having to worry about getting it out.
Mr. Mayor?
I suggest it be a separate notice on the water bill because I think there's a tendency to just look at the amount of money on the water bill and, and pay the bill. And if it was a separate notice included, included in there, I think it could probably be more effective.
Okay.
I was wondering if we might want to, one of the signs up and have on our events that come up, coming up to town, and we have a parade, we have a special event. Maybe put it in the neighborhood and leave it there for a week and move it from neighborhood to neighborhood. Because when you drive in, you see one of those, it really gets your attentions because they're not normally there.
And perhaps like talk to your wife, your girlfriend, whoever's cooking and cleaning up, don't pour it down the drain, turn the hot water on, it's gone. Because somewhere down the line, it's going to get cold again. It's gone. Now, if y'all like me, you can control your wife. Okay, but we, we won't feed you nothing. Really, that's, people do that, I saw her do it, you know, pour it down there, turn the hot water on and it's gone, out of sight, out of mind. Well, her husband has got to go deal with it at some point. So we had this conversation quite a bit.
Okay, we need, we need to move on now. I, we, I thought that thing out, not that, yeah. Ten minute, forty-five minute, ten minute public conference here.
Do we, do we want to have an action plan on this?
Well, I think Mr. Luke can report back to us next time about what process I want to take, how much it's going to cost to add separate tanks in and stuff like that, if you're going to add something in instead of just printing it on the bill. So just, just plan to give us a report on some plan on that for the next time. Okay, other consent agenda, we, we have pulled off the April fifth, approval of the April fifth, two thousand twelve minutes. I would suggest that we go ahead and, and take action on those that are in your package. Are there any corrections or anything?
Motion to approve.
Certain, have motion to approve any other discussion? If not, those in favor, say the five saying aye. All right, those no. All members voted the motion with the exception of Mr. Huffman, who was absent, was that correct?
Motion.
The next item?
Make motion to approve the consent in Congress.
The balance of the consent agenda?
Yes.
Okay. Second. Have motion to say any other discussion? If not, those in favor, say the five saying aye.
Aye.
Those no, all members voting for the motion. Okay, so now we have pulled, let's see, under own business, revised charter ordinance. This is the second vote to adopt the charter provisions and the new ordinance.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the, or the second adoption vote be taken to approve the revised charter as submitted to this council.
I have a motion and a second, so I think we'll, we'll do a roll call over on this one, just in case. Mr. Huffman? Uh, Mr. Bryan?
Yes.
Mr. Bassford?
Yes.
Mr. Cunningham?
Yes.
Okay, five, all members voting for the motion. Good job for our folks, Al, it's a long time coming. Congratulate and certainly express my appreciation to everybody that, that worked on that at the council for, for their, their interest in, in this effort. I think, you know, it's, it's a much improved document. Okay, the approval, the approval of waiver for Cherokee School District. Sure, tap please.
Like to make a motion.
That we approve. We have a motion to approve, we have a second, any discussion?
Is this normal?
Pretty much, to be honest with you. A lot of times you, you have, you need to work with your other gov, other governmental bodies because in one, in reality, once you're going, you charge them all that money, you're taken out of, out of one pocket of the taxpayer and put in another pocket. I mean, it's just, it, it, it's really, and not only that, but I think we need a, as, as good a relationship right now with, with board education as we get, particularly with our, with them in the process of, in the near future, considering to, to build an administration building either downtown or somewhere else. You know, I think, I think that's kind of important. And this is a, certainly a gesture, I think, that, that we want to work with them any way we can. Anyone else? Oh yeah, other governmental bodies, particularly, yeah. I didn't see it. Vote on that or not?
Oh, yeah, vote it in.
Okay. We have motion in a second, any other questions, discussion? If not, those in favor, say the five saying aye.
Aye.
Those no, all members voting for the motion. Item C, approval of sole source equipment for the SCADA system. No, that, no, I see any, this, this one's still, still on there. These are, it's about a seventy-one thousand dollar, what, tell us, Jovey or Dave, exactly what does he, what exactly do these do? Actuators.
Actuators, they're going to allow the slide gates to operate electrically.
Okay, operate electrically, right now you're operating manually?
Yes.
Right, okay. And this, and this, this has nothing to do with the temperature, just, this is just simply flow, right?
Just open, open and, open and close.
Open and close, so that water can control the elevation in the reservoir?
No, well, yeah, open and close the gates, then there's, there's, I think, four gates on the dam, but there's some other large valves on some of the pipelines.
Oh, and that's included in this?
Yep.
Okay, okay. Any other questions? Motion that we approve, we have a motion?
Second.
And a second? Any other? If not, those in favor, say the five saying aye.
Aye.
Those no, all members voting for the motion. Item D and E, we're pulled for our next meeting. Item F, that this coming, coming to put on the potential cemetery resolution, it's kind of...
Yeah, I'd like to make the motion that we make a resolution relative to the cemetery, that a separate fund be established, which will contain all the revenues from the sale of plots. And that, that, those funds will be used exclusively for the beautification and the maintenance of the cemetery. And the second part of that is that to establish, because we haven't really voted on establishing a price for those lots, to be, the current price to be three hundred dollars for a resident and four hundred dollars for a non-resident.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, any other questions or discussions?
The only thing I might mention in discussion is that I respectfully asked Mr. Wood to establish a procedure for the management and authorization of expenditures and administration of that fund. Because if we just set the money there, we won't have any rules on how to use it. So I'd ask that not be part of the motion, but that he set that up so that we know the guidelines of how that mon, revenue would be used.
Does that do that question?
Yes.
Do we have any idea what the cost of it is to maintain? Or, we are establishing a fund, but we don't know if it's going to be gracious plenty, or are we going to be way short, or what's the...
Well, if I may respond to that, it would be limited, yeah, at the discussion period of last meeting, the maintenance or the cost would be limited to the funds generated at the current time. And the suggestion was made at the last meeting that during the budgetary process of the next fiscal year, we would look as to budgeting additional funds. But whatever we did in terms, in terms of maintenance and or beautification of that cemetery would be limited to the amount of money within those funds and wouldn't, wouldn't incur any additional expense.
Was that adequate enough to...
Right now, it depends on how many you sell. We just sold one at three hundred dollars, but we have a potential sale...
What's the cost of maintaining it?
Well, right now, they just go out there and mow the lawn once in a while, or cut the grass, so...
Do we have any idea? Surely we know what the cost is to go out there and just cut the grass. Now, are we doing too much or too little?
We're doing probably too little at this time.
Well, now, we had, we had an amount, an amount in this year's budget, was it fifty-two or something? Didn't we have an amount in there for, for maintaining that cemetery?
There was a fund set up when you were going to get for professional services, so that you could spend the money for the professional services. I don't believe there's any money in there now, but there is a place to put it.
Wasn't there something that...
We spent money on, on the slow repair, Mayor, I think we did some survey and some of those things.
So like about fifty-two, right?
Fifty, well, fifty-two, transferred out of one, general fund, go, put it going to the cemetery fund this past year.
Initially, I think to kind of answer your question, initially, we're going to have to budget some general fund monies into the operation of this thing, because there's not going to be enough sales of lots, in my opinion, to anywhere near take care of it.
So why do we have to go trouble establish another set aside fund, just put it in the general fund and we can, we know we've got to maintain it? Give it out of your money?
It's sort of the monies that you're selling from, or that you're obtaining from the sale of the lots, you don't want to all of a sudden start using that money for other purposes. So, in my, that's my opinion anyway, that those, those funds should actually go into, or those revenues should actually go into a designated fund, because they were generated from the sale of those lots. And if we were to turn around and spend it for another purpose, we'd be defeating the...
I understand that, but if you only taking in maybe two thousand dollars a year, if you're doing that, just...
Well, we have a potential, once the resolution passes, I understand there is one family that wants to buy thirty to forty plots right off the bat, so there might be nine to twelve thousand dollars put into that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I'd like to ask, Mr. Wood, would get to Dave and Jim and give us kind of a overview of going out there and mowing it every so often and general maintenance, not creaming the crops, so that we have a number? So we're talking about it next meeting, we have that. Okay, and just put that back on the agenda for the next meeting?
Draw the motion, or do you want to proceed that we're limited to the expense of the funds that's generated? Or the revenues that are generated, excuse me?
I got a suggestion that we hold off on the motion and maybe check with some other cities that own cemeteries, see how they, they do it. I mean, we have to do certain things out there, whether we have the money in the fund or not, we have to maintain it. If something breaks, we have to fix it. You know, we have to do certain things to it, so I'm not sure if it's a good idea to have a separate fund or not, because we, the expenses are what they are, we have no control over that unless we choose to upgrade something. So maybe we should check with a few other cities that have cemeteries. I'm sure we're not the first one to face this problem and see, see how they, they do it other places.
Mr. Mayor, I just have one question, what do we do with the funds that we receive in the meantime?
Well, you know, I tend to agree, it needs to be restricted, the funds that come in from the sales of cemetery funds ought to be restricted to taking care of that cemetery. There ought to be a separate budget too. Now, a separate account for those funds, if they're restricted funds, you know, they can be restricted on paper, I guess. But there ought to be a separate budget, and, and if we take money from the general fund to supplement that budget, you would have a line item of, of monies from the general fund and monies from whatever sales, projected sales you might have at that time. I don't know, that's, that's basically the motion, is that the funds that we're generating now, or the revenues that we're generating now, would be put into a separate fund and be designated for that cemetery and that we don't use them for other purposes.
So what do we do when the lots are all sold out?
That's a good question, that there is expansion room, but there would be extensive,
and hopefully, hopefully what you would be generating is enough money for some sort of perpetual care of that thing too. That's how these other cemeteries work.
But we charge enough to do it.
And, and we need to make sure that when you charge something for one, you're, you're charging enough to, at least a portion of that, and I think three hundred dollars is kind of ridiculous, but that may be common. But that you're, that a portion of that be set aside for that.
Mr. Mayor? The monies that we had to spend last year to fix the erosion problems, that I think was the name, fifty-two thousand dollars, that came out of the unsigned...
was the number, fifty-two thousand dollars, that came out of the unsigned fund balance, move over to the general fund, then to move over into the cemetery fund. So we, we had to move some monies around, but if, if we just say it's gonna come out of the general fund, then we need a line item, and we designate how much that's gonna be. But I think if we get the answers back from Mr. Wood on bottom line maintenance, then we'll have a general idea of what we wanna put in there. And I wanna call the question.
Yeah, we did have a motion and a second, I believe, on that issue there, this, and plenty of discussion here on it. So I think we ought to go ahead and, and vote on it. So those in favor, signify as saying aye. All opposed, no. All members voted for the motion. Thank you. Under new business, possible action regarding the city property casualty insurance, Mr. Wood, you wanna, you wanna handle that? You have, you have basically our existing property and casualty insurance carrier, and we have one additional bid. I was a little disappointed we don't have more than, more than one additional quote. I understand they did try to get three, and one didn't respond. But there's a substantial difference in between the two quotes there. So you have that in your package, I believe, and hopefully, have, have to take a look at it, and so that we can discuss it at this point, if you have anything to discuss.
I make a motion that we accept the one beacon bid.
We have a motion and a second to accept the one beacon, and any other discussion? How did, where did one beacon come from?
Who's in the audience?
Okay, I know who it was, to be honest with you. Okay. I mean, it...
So Council, if you, if you have any questions, Mr. Hodges, who represents one beacon, is in the audience.
Mr. Mayor, I guess I'd ask Mr. Wood, is he comfortable with this, with this bid from one beacon?
Yes, there are some distinctions between this bid and the German bid, but overall, I think for a hundred thousand dollars, plus or minus, that we have the opportunity to save over a twelve-year, twelve-month period that yes, I would be comfortable with it.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second, any other discussion? If not, those in favor signify as saying aye. All opposed, no. All members voted for the motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make, tag on something here. We just voted to save the city approximately a hundred thousand dollars. It's, that savings is coming from fire casualty insurance. We're getting ready to go through an ISO study of our fire department. The biggest glaring error that we have that's gonna knock us down is our lack of staff. Right now, ISO for our size requires twenty-four salespeople, I mean, firemen. We have six. I think everybody can quickly do the math on that. And I suggest that with this hundred thousand dollars we did save with fire casualty, we go out and hire two new firemen immediately. And I'd like to put that as a proposal, right now. That's a motion.
Well, uh...
Mr. Mayor?
In the form of a motion? Okay, uh, do we have a second?
I'll second it, just to bring the discussion up.
Okay. Mr. Bishop, you had something?
Yes, we just saved the hundred thousand, and were we paying, we had to pay upfront on this policy. So we actually do have a hundred thousand. We budgeted, did we? Did, did we budget for the higher number? And, no. And so we aren't really looking at, we saved a hundred thousand based off the two bids, but we don't actually have a hundred thousand dollars in our pocket. Now, the concern is, at some point in time, we will realize that, and we can move ahead with that. And I agree with Mr. Hubbard, that definitely we need more firemen, but until we actually have the funds, I think.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Couple of issues with this hundred thousand, even though it's a hundred thousand dollars savings between the bids, the, the actual policy, insurance policy, covers two different fiscal years. So we're really not saving the hundred thousand dollars in, in, in actual money. It's a, it's a hundred thousand dollars savings that we wouldn't have to necessarily budget part of that for next year. We're currently, if I understand from Mr. Wood, spending about three hundred and sixty-five thousand, if I'm correct, or three hundred and five thousand, three hundred and five thousand. So if we look at the three hundred and five thousand and just compare it to the new bid, the, the actual savings is somewhere around fifty, fifty thousand dollars, or forty...
Forty-seven thousand.
Forty-some thousand dollars. So my suggestion would be that, and I do agree with Mr. Hubbard, that we are understaffed in the fire department, and we're going into this budgetary process very quickly. In fact, it's starting in May, that we definitely include the look at increasing the fire staff, especially after the ISO report comes back to us to meet that, but then look at the specifics in the budget as to where we're gonna get the money in order to pay for that.
May I respond to that? First of all, we're not gonna pay the hundred thousand dollars immediately in one year. It will be spread out over twelve months. Okay? So it's not like it's all gonna be in one calendar year, or one physical, this one physical year, it's gonna be spread out over the two, just as you suggested. But the other thing is, if we wait till we get the ISO report back, and it rates us, it rates us to where we have to pay higher premiums, it's over. We've already been rated.
Well, that's not from the consultant. You're talking from the state review.
I, I'm talking about if we get the ISO rating back that says that we are deficient, and that we therefore need to, the, all these citizens are gonna have to pay higher insurance premiums. This way, we do it prior, we do it prior rather than later.
I totally concur, as a...
Okay, thank you.
But what, what we have is, we have an ISO consultant that's gonna come back and answer these questions prior to the ISO state review. So therefore, we should be able to address any issues in the budgetary process to overcome anything that the state review would, would put us into the position of an increased rating, isn't that correct?
When is ISO due, due when? We had, we've had a meeting last night, and I met again today with the consultant. And yes, we look, we don't look bad. We look okay, but I don't wanna gamble on that.
I was under the impression from the fire chief at one point, that once they actually do the rating, you've got like twelve months before it goes into effect. Now, if, if that's the case, then, you know, we're, we're poised right now, assuming that we move forward with this consultant's recommendation, and we've already agreed to do that for a November referendum, you know?
Let me ask you another thing. Let's talk about protection. ISO says we need twenty-four, and we got six. Twenty-four, twenty-four. That's what our city, right now, and this came out last, yesterday, when you were there, that ISO right now would say that we need twenty-four firemen. We can say we have six, and that's, we have six. We only have six firemen. That's right. And then, and then yesterday, well, correct me, is the, is the chief there? Yesterday, I was over at the fire station. All, all, all the engines were out on the calls, all of them. There were three calls. We had nobody at the fire stations. Nobody. And I'm talking about protection. We need protection. And it's time that we're pushing this around. Yes?
Can, can you clarify that number for me? Six?
That's a per shift number.
And, and ISO recommend...
Yeah, I, I heard, I heard the man make the same comment yesterday, Mr. Hubbard reported. He's, he's intending to give us his report. He is here yesterday, today, and tomorrow, and is intending to give us our report within the next three weeks. But I heard the same twenty-four number that Mr. Hubbard, or the man.
Per shift, per, for both stations combined?
No, I, I think he's talking about ultimately more than our current two stations.
Yeah.
Well, I think he's saying for our city, our size, that we need twenty-four.
So right, right now, we have six per shift, both stations?
Yes.
Three per station.
Is that, is that twelve per shift? So we got twelve?
Yeah.
We got twenty-four firemen, around half of the twelve.
Twenty-four hours.
Mr. Mayor? I think what the, the difference is, is that we've probably got three per station per shift, and what Mr. Hubbard is, is trying to say is that we probably need five to six per shift in order to meet it. So if you took four fire stations at, at six per shift, that's where that twenty-four comes, I believe.
But right now...
That would be two new additional fire stations.
Right now, if the fire, if you got a fire at your home, there's gonna be three firemen out there just to, at first. And if there's anybody in that house, they cannot go in that house. The law will not permit them to go in that house. You must have four. So if there's an individual in that house, that individual's up. We need protection now.
I don't think anybody disagrees with that.
And let's, let's move on a quick...
Mr. Mayor?
Wait for their final report.
I think, okay, so we paid for this consultant to come in and give us this input. It's not finished yet. You say you met with him and got a glimpse. I don't know, come sit down here, what is going on. I would rather see the report and react to that report of what we need to do versus sitting here tonight going, oh, yeah, I agree. We can eat, that's reason we hired the consultant. Yeah, we need more fire stations, and we're looking at where they're gonna be located. Yes, 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 but... See, that was the big, Mr. Mayor, that was the biggest concern when we hired that consultant, is where are we gonna put the fire station? And I'd forget to see a building go out and try and put a fire. If you don't have people, you don't qualify. You gotta have the people.
The, the problem, the only problem that I had is that we voted, we voted in a prior meeting to put to referendum the choice to the citizens whether they wanted to expend the money for fire stations versus increased homeowner insurance cost or however that'll be worth. And we're gonna be generating the language for that November referendum, and we're sort of saying, let's proceed ahead now, before we've gotten the approval of the citizens that we've said we're gonna ask for. And I don't, I don't disagree with...
The referendum is good, but that's for a station. And if we have six stations and only six people, you're still gonna have, no, you're not gonna have the protection to put the fire out.
Let me, let me, we've got a motion and a second on the floor, I believe, but let me see if I can put this in perspective, as I see it. We've got the balance of the year, we're talking about having about forty-something thousand dollars' worth of money to spend or hire someone addition. So we're talking about maybe one fireman. Would that be right, to put on board? One fire. And then during that time, however, we will be budgeting for, hopefully, additional positions for our next year's budget, which in all, it's gonna require, might be, and maybe you're wrong, will gonna require some village adjustment to, to do that. So what we're, what we're asking in this referendum is that, in this vote here tonight, is that we go ahead prior to the report coming in, and I'm assuming hire one more fireman, perhaps. Is that, is that a fair assessment?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Just say, just say it's forty thousand.
Yeah, well, it will be about forty-something. Okay, we're talking about a hundred.
It will not equip the firemen. My bias uniform, that it will not equip the firemen. We have addition.
That question was put to the chief last night, and he said fifty thousand per fireman.
Well, I just said forty won't cover it. I didn't know the number, but thank you, I appreciate that.
I would appreciate if we could get off the, stop on dollars and start talking about the protection. If your house is burning, then you're going in, if they can come to it.
I think we're all in agreement with that.
Well, we, we can find the money.
Oh, oh.
Okay.
Any other comments?
Yeah, what is the...
Susan, you wanna state the motion?
Mr. Hubbard said since we just saved a hundred thousand dollars for fire casualty insurance, the ISO study showed there's a lack of staff, require twenty-four firemen, that we only have six, and he suggested or made motion that we hired two firemen immediately.
So we're, we're talking about hiring two firemen, and in other words, with additional funds. So we're, we're, would have a budget adjustment, I'm assuming, of maybe fifty to sixty thousand dollars. Everyone understand that, the motion?
Could I ask Mr. Wood to address the feasibility of that before we vote? Or maybe Nathan?
Well, you've got monies that are, that are contingency monies. You do have monies that are not appropriated for any specific purpose. So if, if council chose to do that, I think the dollars could be identified. You would, you would need to amend the budget to, for that purpose.
Okay. Any other comments, questions?
Well, we have to amend the budget, which requires a council vote. How can we vote for this without the monies that we might need?
Well, we'd certainly be appropriating here. We'd be voting to appropriate the savings from the insurance, okay? Toward the cost of a, of one or more, I guess, toward the cost of two additional firemen.
So then, should we add to the motion to amend the budget to cover the cost of two firemen?
I, I would think that would be appropriate, yes.
I'll second that.
Any other, any other discussion? If not, those in favor signify as saying aye. All opposed, no?
No.
All members voting for the motion except for Mr. Bishop. City managers report.
I'll go through just a few things real quick. Our public work folks have patched some of those deep dips on Marietta Road down in front of Most Ministries, which I think anybody who travels that area will, will appreciate. But that's just in anticipation of the, the major resurfacing of Marietta Highway, the scheduled to begin later this year. We hope to be able to let those contracts in June or July. Hickory Flat work has already started. The contractors moved a construction trailer onto that job site, and we're hopeful, we're beginning to see some progress there right away. Our regulatory traffic signs across the city, those signs begin to lose adequate levels of reflectivity, meaning safety, within just three or four years. And, and obviously, they also can be lost or stolen. So last year, we began to work on a program for replacing all of the city's regulatory traffic signs on a scheduled and programmed basis. We've divided the city into grids, and we're in the process of replacing those signs within the first grid area, for which we have budgeted funds this year. We have a total of six grids, and we're hoping to complete sound replacements in grids one and two during this year. ISO consultant is in town. We expect, we can get for him to complete his field work tomorrow. Expect to get written report back from him within the next three weeks. Not to be confused with ISO, which is a non-governmental organization, the Georgia Firefighters Standards and Trainings Council, that would be the firefighters' equivalent of post, audited our fire department this week. And that is an agency of the state of Georgia, which makes certain that our firefighters meet and maintain state-required training and certification standards, and the preliminary results of that audit were satisfactory, so we're proud of that. You will recall that our code-rated emergency weather warning system requires subscribers to opt-in to the system. Thanks in part to recent media coverage of the need to enroll in the system, we are now up to about eight hundred subscribers. We want to continue to encourage enrollment, and we will be conducting a one-time telephonic, telephone-generated announcement to city published telephone numbers, encouraging people to enroll by using the city website or by telephoning City Hall, so that we can better manage... better manage what we hope will be the response to that, uh, announcement. We're going to spread that out over several, through several sections of the city, everybody will be getting to notice at the same time or even the same, same week. Work on the City Hall roof is complete, except for a few very minor punch list items. The sewer treatment plant design development report, Susan, you were not in your office when I brought a copy there, but I left it on the corner of your desk. If anybody on council wants to look through that report, it has been, in fact, been submitted to the state E P D, and you can avail yourself of a copy of that in, in Ms. Dan's office. Electronic recycling day and document shredding day will be held here at City Hall on May the fifth, from, I think it's eight in the morning to one in the afternoon, those times on the website, I think they're correct. So, the public is encouraged to bring either any documents they would like to have shredded, or any electronic items such as old cell phones, or television sets, or computers, and leave them here on that day rather than, than discarding them in the conventional waste room where they wind up in a landfill. And finally, the dedication of the new community garden on Big Oak Drive will be held at two P M. on Sunday, this coming Sunday. If you are not O I S. committed, you might want to go see what that group of local citizens has accomplished. I rode out there today, not really expecting to see more than two or three people, but I was really astounded to see about fifty volunteers out there. I understand more, even more than that with that earlier during the day. Those people received a nine thousand dollars grant from Home Depot, and they had a large crew of Home Depot volunteers from the local Home Depot, Home Depot store working on the site. They had breakfast provided by Chick-fil-A and lunch provided by Taco Matz, I'll put in a plug for those local restaurants, but what they have accomplished and the way they, in which they have turned that vacant piece of ground into a really impressive gardening facility with a gazebo and, and a lot of nice features, and they're, they're to be complimented, and the entire crew is, they're proud of what they've accomplished, and they're grateful to the city for giving them the, the use of that piece of, of ground, turned their dream into a reality, it really is impressive, but I would encourage any of you who can to be at that groundbreaking on Sunday. Thank you, Mayor's folks, for coming in, sir. Two P M. is, true pot, I'm sure, yes.
I have a question, permit. Mr. Wood, hand on some compliments.
Okay.
Glad to see. We did receive our departmental quarterly update, I'd like for you to pass on to the department heads of Police Department, Fire Department, Engineering Department, and I T. Department for an excellent report. It's down to two, three pages that you're going to follow through quickly. There are some other in here that is a major Moby Dick novel, so compliments to those department heads. The, the question also I have, and we've continued to back this thing around, we're losing, uh, through the first five, seven months, about eight thousand dollars at the collection site.
Right.
Uh, reject that on out, there's fourteen thousand dollars for the year. Last year, we left sixty thousand. So, I would ask that we relook at it again, come back with recommendations, come back with something. We might have just to take the hit and say to offer that to our citizens, we're going to handle it, but it continues to, it's a big improvement from last year, sixty to a projected fourteen, maybe we can live with it, but let's, let's look at that and get some recommendations in there for that.
That's what you bring up, good point about, about that offsite, uh, the, the, the amount of losses has certainly declined dramatically, nevertheless, so has the usage of this thing. Right now, if you look at those numbers, and I don't have them in front of me here, I don't think, must have backed in the very back of that act, there's any separate items that we have, but as I, as I looked at that, if you take out the city vehicles, you're only talking about maybe five vehicles a day going in there on the average. The question is whether or not it's, it's worth the effort and so forth, and the cost involved, and the loss involved for five vehicles a day. That's something we need to look at, I think.
Mr. Mayor, what would we, what would the city do? I saw that. What would the, where would the city go if we took that away?
I imagine they would go to the landfill, I guess.
It would have had a cost, right?
Yeah, well, it's got a cost anyway, and we'd pay anyway.
Yeah, that would be...
I'm sorry.
Go ahead. Would be an interesting study, I did notice there's a pretty large percentage of the vehicles, or city vehicles, I don't know, I'm assuming they're bigger trucks, probably the big dump truck that picks up stuff, so there's thirty-three loads in March, so that's, and only losing about less than two thousand a month, or costing two thousand a month, so I'm, I'm wondering if we may be still way ahead, even though the, the whole thing, if you look at it overall, yeah, it's losing money, but thirty-three trucks, so city waste has to go somewhere.
Looking at that word.
Yeah. Forty-four in February.
March is seventy-one.
So, it's...
That's a good point, you know, in terms of...
The city's telling me we're probably doing better, just to, to leave it alone, but it'd be interesting to...
Any other, any other questions, comments?
Procedural issue, we can go back to Mr. Huffman's motion. We actually had a motion within a motion, and I would ask that Mr. Huffman clarified by including what Mr. Bryant did. Mr. Huffman made the motion to add two firemen, and Mr. Bryant, after we had a second, Mr. Bryant actually asked, I think, for an amendment to include a budget amendment, so we ought to clarify that Mr. Huffman has modified his motion to include that budget amendment.
He did, no, I don't know that.
Yeah, I did, I did, that's, you're right.
Yeah.
Okay, if he does so, also second to the vote, just, he's saying, it's just a procedural thing that when they read the tape or hear the tape, it won't be correct as to what...
It did include, my sense, it did include his, his amendment there, okay.
The tape doesn't record the nod.
Well, it does, it was a nod. Any other, any other comments, questions, okay? The only other thing that I would, I have here is that, as you know, we are, uh, in the process of doing the street scape project up Waluska Street there, and I believe at the last meeting, we talked about the need that had been discovered for replacing some water lines there. So, I just wanted to make everyone aware that at, in order to expedite this as much as possible, we will need to approve a, a contract at our next meeting, so that may be our work session there, yes, probably, but we will need to do that in order to expedite and not get in the way for the street scape, uh, every step, okay? That's all we have, I think.
I wish you'd have adjourned.
Most adjourned, those in favor? Aye.